Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Good evening. I'd like to follow this meeting in order for the Bellis Falls Union High School Board. First thing we have on the agenda is communication and public comments. So I'm gonna go to the people that are on the screen first. Is there anybody with comments there? Give us just a minute. We're just trying to make sure everybody is on here.
I don't see any hands up.
There is no hands online at this moment, so we're gonna go to public comments in the hall. And if you'd come up and speak into that, go ahead.
You have to turn it on though.
And if you'll just introduce yourself when you come up, please.
Good evening. Nice to see some of my former colleagues that I served on the board with. I am here tonight as a concerned citizen and alumnus. Alumni, alumnus of this school. I graduated in 2005. I've known John Brody for over 20 years. I first met John in the fall of 1997 when I attended Greenwood School in Putney. John had always been very loyal to his students, to the Greenwood School. Particularly, I became a freshman here in 2001, and John followed me, followed me here, which I thought was kind of cool. John always supported me here. I was on IEP. I was in special education, which I'm not ashamed of. I'm also dyslexic. John always supported me, supported his students, supported this building, supported its faculty and staff, and just was, in my eyes, amazing because of what he did for me, but also just seeing what he did for the community. I am very ashamed of this board. And Ms. Chair, if I can have a few moments. I don't know if there's a time frame. It's not very long. I'm almost done.
So I'm gonna tell you. I probably don't need this with my voice. I'm gonna tell you that you drew the long straw this time and didn't tell you it's two minutes.
Ah, gotcha. Okay. So can I have a few more moments? Okay. I'm very ashamed of this board for accepting the resignation of Mr. Brody. And I'm particularly very ashamed of you, Mr. Superintendent. I don't understand. I think we as community members deserve answers. And if I'm out of line, sorry, but not sorry. You know, we deserve answers. And don't give me that executive session stuff. I served on this board. We deserve answers. What did he do? Was his performance that bad? I highly doubt it. Again, we deserve answers. And I would move that the board accepts the resignation of the superintendent. So thank you for your time.
Next person is Chris.
Thank you. My name is Chris Moore. I have three children in this high school, freshmen, junior, and senior. I'm standing here to support Principal Brody for many reasons. He has had children in the school system. He's been vice principal for 12 years here. He was just hired as principal less than two years ago. He has historical knowledge of the school. He lives in town. He's a positive energy of the school. You will not find someone to replace him with similar credentials. So whatever deficiencies he may have as a principal, I ask that a more creative solution be proposed to allow him to tweak or fix any problems, to allow him to continue to be a positive force at the high school. We just had, obviously, two years of disruption with COVID. And I don't think the students need any more disruption at the leadership level. So I implore the school board, the superintendent, and Principal Brody to work out something so Mr. Brody stays. Thank you.
Who's next?
I have a little trouble walking.
Take your time.
Because you'll let her get me up right now. Yes, we will. Kathy Bergman. I am a member of the community, and I'm reading this for a group of people who are here. And it's addressed to David Clark. According to the Broadway Reform article published on September 9, 2021, you pushed for the district to hire Mr. Haas even when some of the WNESU board members had reservations. Did you do a background check on Mr. Haas before pushing for him to take this position? Are you aware that he has no confidence vote against him when he was principal in Gardner Mass and was removed from that position? Are you aware that there were also questions about him when he was at L. School at Fremont, New Hampshire? Given the state of special ed in our district, the issues at the Bellis Falls Middle School, and now what is happening in the high school, did any board members think that it might be Mr. Haas who was causing the problems? And now the WNESU board is considering giving him a raise? I was asked to re-yes.
Birds are clearly cathy.
Hi, David.
Anyone else like to speak? So I have a letter that was... Oh, come on down.
Hi, I'm Kim Heath, and I'm a resident of Rockingham and have had a multitude of kids go through this school system. And the light is at the end of the tunnel. My final child here will graduate next year. She is not an easy kid. And I credit John Brody with the fact that she's even still here. She has not been served by special education. We have been denied some testing that we've asked for. And John has really pulled her into his hole and helped her to be able to navigate math so that she can get through the high school and hopefully graduate. Without him, I don't even know what will happen to her. I can only hope that we can get all the way to next June, but honestly, rethink that.
Stephanie. I'm doing good to recognize everyone.
My name is Stephanie Mitchell. I'm a graduate of this school. I am a past employee of the district. And I had a child go through this school. She... She... And we have always been big supporters of Mr. Brody. I don't believe that there's anything that he could have done that would warrant accepting his resignation. I too am ashamed of the board for accepting it. I am ashamed of this district. I'm ashamed to have been a graduate of this school. I never thought I'd say those words, but that's truly how I feel. I think after all the time and the support that Mr. Brody has given this community and this school, the sports he's coached, this is... There's not even any words to say how bad this is. And I too would welcome the resignation of the superintendent.
Anyone else in the hall like to speak? Jim?
Jim Comtoys, Westminster North. I'm not gonna say anything about Mr. Brody. His credentials stand for themselves. The only thing I will say is I have a daughter coming downhill in the fall, and that easily could change real quick. Because if you're gonna run this place like it's a revolving door and we're gonna go through principals like water...
I'm having trouble hearing you quit. I'm sorry.
I would say if you're gonna run the place like it's a revolving door and we're gonna go through principals like water, I'm not game plan for that. And neither will my daughter. We'll find somewhere else to sit here because of so much crap.
Anyone else in the hall? Andy, is there anyone online that would like to speak?
I have not seen any hands.
I'm sorry. I couldn't see you past that, but come on up. Thank you, everyone.
I'm Linda Prinsen. I've worked in this building for 36 years, 19 of those with John. As he started in the building, we worked in adjacent areas as special educators. In an open building, you get a very good sense of how your colleagues performed. He performed in a stellar way. As he moved into administration, he became an even stronger supporter of students. He wants students to succeed. And often, he works, always, he works very hard to make that happen. He helps them with academics. He helps them with other questions. It doesn't matter the time of day, early in the morning, late in the evening. He's there for them. He's out on the athletic field for them, always supporting. And he supports staff. I think he has a sense of what people are doing and how they're doing in the building. And when things are going well, gives people the freedom to teach the way they need to teach and supports them to improve their professional career, which benefits the students. I really hope that he will stay because I think he is a very strong benefit to this school and this community. I saw the school climate improve over my time here as he moved into administration. Less fights, always none. And there used to be fights in the hall, and scary. With high school students, they're big. And so seeing the positive change in the school climate has been tremendous. And I'm a very strong supporter of Mr. Brody and hope that he will reconsider and try to make something, some kind of a plan that will work to keep him on board his heart is in this school.
Anyone else in the hall? I'm seeing... I have a letter that was emailed to me late this afternoon. Diane Ross was unable to be here. And she has asked me to read this, so it's personal. I read it, so I just tried to scan it for you. So here I am. I am a parent of two teens. My son graduated from Bellis Falls Union High School in 2022. My daughter is in her junior year to graduate in 2024. I was shocked and disappointed to learn that Principal John Brody is not likely to return for his school year 2023-24. It is my understanding that he had not intended to leave his position, and I am hopeful that he will work to prevent his unnecessary... This unnecessary change. In my personal dealings, I found John Brody to be professional, respectful, thoughtful, and supportive. He has a longstanding positive relationship with students, parents, staff, and our community. Two of my experiences with John Brody included very challenging situations, and John was impartial. He was dedicated to learning all perspectives. He listened patiently without judgment or prejudice and was available. It was a winning combination, and I felt confident that he was determined to do the right thing for the students involved. I was pleased with the outcome of both matters. As I look at the future of Bellis Falls Union High School, I am glad that my children are not younger due to the concerns for the direction our school district appears to be moving. The reputation of our school district is less than positive. And... Sorry, this is very small. And there appears to be a lack of respect for our dedicated educators. It is our responsibility to do your best. It is your responsibility to do your best to improve our school district to more than adequately support school staff and provide a quality program for all students. In my opinion, you must do better. I appreciate you for taking on your challenging roles in these very trying and difficult times. Educators are high demand. You must do everything possible to maintain the quality of our school personnel, especially these individuals who are respected by students, families, and fellow educators. We cannot afford to lose additional high-quality staff. Students are taught to correct their mistakes. You must do the same. Superintendent, I'm gonna correct it. It says Chris Haas, Andy Haas, and members of the Bellis Falls Union High School School Board are urging you to do the right thing respectfully, Diane Ross. That is all that I received today. Do you have anybody online yet?
I do not have anymore online.
Anyone in the hall? This is... Glad. Did I get it right?
Yes. Thank you for letting us speak. On behalf of Mr. Brody, I would like to know why he resigned. Is there anyone that would like to say why Mr. Brody resigned? Anyone on the board know why he resigned? Does anybody?
I normally don't speak to public comments, but I'll tell you that I received a letter of resignation that I read at the last meeting. I do not have a copy of it with me, but you can look up the last meeting to be able to hear that, the letter that he gave to us.
And because of all the concerns people have in this community and the staff, finding a way to keep this valuable. Principal, we haven't got anybody in this district that comes from our community, knows our kids like Mr. Brody. So I would consider asking the board, please, think about keeping Mr. Brody here for us, for all of us. Thank you.
Anyone else? We got online. Come on down.
I'm Susan Swan. I teach in the math department. I've been here for 33 years. First, I'd like to clarify that Mr. Brody did not resign. He did not use the word resign. So to be saying that is inaccurate. He simply said that he was not going to pursue... I don't know the language. I don't want to say that. But he did not use the words resign. I would piggyback on some of the things that people in the auditorium have said. And I would ask what kind of support he had. When we have new teachers that come into the building, they're assigned a mentor. Was he assigned a mentor? We have training as mentees how to work with our new people in the building. I'm a mentor for a teacher this year, and I was a mentor for a teacher last year. Is there a mentor who has that same kind of training to work with our administration? What kinds of feedback was Mr. Brody given that he needed to improve upon or change or fix? What kinds of things was the board or the superintendent noticing that he was deficient in, that he needed to work to improve? And was he given that information in a clear way and in a timely manner so that he could make an effort to make those improvements? So there is an opportunity to continue to have some continuity for the building and for our students and for our staff and for our district and our community. And I would ask you those questions and to consider and reflect upon those questions and consider working with or finding a way to help Mr. Brody to meet whatever your expectations are that would allow you to move forward looking for a new principal. Thanks for listening.
Anyone else? Yes.
Sorry for my later arrival, and I'm not sure what everyone else has said. I was busy doing after-school and then rushed over here. I just... So I don't know what people have said or anything.
First, can you say your name?
Yes, sorry. So my name's Amanda Damaris. I work at the Westminster School, but I also have three children, one who's already gone through here. I have a junior at this high school, and I have a son at the middle school. My major concern... And I honestly, I don't know all the details about Mr. Brody's situation or anything. But my concern is that we have someone who has been a member of the community, who has been there with our children, a man who has seen me on one of my absolute worst days and honestly, probably could have gotten me escorted out of the school because I was dealing with personal problems involving my children. And instead, he took the time to talk calmly and help me through an extremely difficult situation. And I respect that man for that. And I think it really says something to have somebody that we know working with our children. My concern is that we should be taking the time to correct anything that might be going on. Like I said, I don't know what might have caused this. If it has any shortcomings, I think it would be much better to work with that person who's involved in this community rather than start fresh with somebody who doesn't know our children. I'm also very concerned about the mass amount of people that have left this school district. I've been working in the school district for almost five years, and it's insane how much turnover there's been. At this moment, we don't even have a real principal at the middle school. And I've maybe met the person once who's acting as principal. So there's a true concern that if we get rid of Mr. Brody, how long is it gonna be for us to get someone new? And who knows what we're gonna be getting when we get someone new? Versus, we know someone cares about our kids, cares about our community. Let's work with that rather than having to start off fresh. And, you know, if Mr. Brody sees this, I just want to say thank you for helping support myself and my children. And I would really love to see my child, who does not have a principal right now, have someone who has been in the school. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online yet? Yes.
Hi, I'm Julie Torres. And I've been working here for 23 years. I did graduate from here in 1994 as well. And I've worked alongside Mr. Brody as an educator and then as having him work as my supervisor with Chris Hudson. And I would say that especially after having Chris step down and retire, leave us for them, Mr. Brody stepped into that role quite nicely. Was it perfect? I mean, nobody's perfect. We all have one for improvement, as I do, you do, everybody does. But he's done a stellar job keeping the students positive and on track and motivated. He's motivating to the faculty, and he leads purple like nobody else leads purple. And he's not even from Bellis Falls. So that says a lot. I would also say that during the pandemic, when Mr. Hudson and Mr. Brody were both having to take on jobs that were not in their job description, they did it like nothing I've ever seen in my life. Delivering school lunches, wiping down chairs, doing things that at any other time in our life, we would have thought, what is... what's happening? What... you know, this is unprecedented. But they stepped up and they did everything from cleaning things down to delivering food to... I remember seeing them on the gator delivering water to one of the sporting events. So they... And that was before COVID. They're just always great. So to lose John at this point would be a tremendous loss for our school and our community, for the continuity, and also just because he does love this town. He takes care of everyone in this town. He takes care of all of our students and all of his staff. He really cares about all of us, and it's genuinely felt. I also wanted to say one more thing, and it left my brain. Yeah, it's... I'm getting so old. One more thing. Oh, oh, and oh, yeah, that's the most important thing, probably. I did have a personal conversation with Mr. Brody earlier this afternoon, and he did say online, it was this morning. But anyway, I had a conversation with him, and he said that he was really sad that he would be done at the end of June, and he really did not want to leave. He would rather stay. So if he would rather stay, I would implore you to find a solution that would be in everyone's best interest and allow him to finish doing the good work he does.
We're gonna move to the gentleman online called Adam Stewart.
Hi, this is Dylan Stewart speaking. I would like to speak as a member of the student body and of the BFUHS community. I've known Mr. Brody since I was in second grade, and now I'm a student at this school. He brings a sense of community and trust to our school, and many students that I've talked to about it feel the same way. When I had to deal with conflict with another student, Mr. Brody provided me with great advice about how to handle the situation properly. He's been working for the district for so long and has a sense of wisdom that made him very easy to open up to. I really appreciate him as our principal, and I would hate to see him leave. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? See any hands up there? Anyone else in the hall? Colin, you want a second chance?
I know I spoke already, but...
Come on up.
Again, with all due respect, why? Why are we here? What are we doing? Guys, think about that. Other than Ms. Lambert that voted to, like, you never said it. Thank you, thank you. I can never say the word. Guys, why? What did he do? Why are we not allowed to know? Don't say that you can't say, because I know you know. And as Ms. Torres said, he doesn't want to go, guys. So why are we here? Focus on what you're supposed to be doing. Your job, ladies and gentlemen, is policy and budget. May I remind you, as board members, as a former board member, policy and budget. What are we doing? What did he do? Nobody wants him to go. Hello? We deserve to know. This is a bunch of crap, with all due respect. And Mr. Superintendent, as far as I'm concerned, you're the one that wants him to go. Why? Policy and budget, ladies and gentlemen, not kicking a principal out that has done nothing. So come... I plan on running, so I hope you guys vote for me again because I plan on running for the board. because I plan on running for the board. As Mr. Superintendent, you and I are going to have a lot of conversations. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone on the screen? We're going to move to unfinished business, which is principal search, which is, we're here to, as a board, Mr. Haas was going to help us with the steps it takes. And Director's comments will be after that, if you folks stick around and listen to that, I think it might be good.
So I sent the board a... I'll attest for that. I sent the board a proposed timeline for a principal search for the principal for Bellas Falls Union High School. Timeline that we put out would do an aggressive campaign for advertisement, then doing e-surveys with our community, but also doing some focus groups, accepting applications through the month of February. Then we would do first rounds of interviews in early March, with a second round of interviews. We'd then do site visits, and then we'd have a public meeting for the finalists with a recommendation to the board by early people. I've also investigated whether hiring a firm to come in and do a broader search that could round up candidates. I've spoken with a couple of firms. One has said that our district is too small, so they couldn't assist us. Another one has not gotten back with a formal proposal, but essentially a soup-to-nuts search, where they would do the entire search, where they would recruit candidates, do the focus groups. Everything I just outlined there would be about $8,000. And the board can, the board could also à la carte in there and choose different pieces, so.
Does the board members have any question for our superintendent for the guidelines that he has given us?
When did you send that in?
I, they'll send to you over the weekend. I believe Saturday.
In just a moment, please, the board has to speak first. Does anyone have any questions for Andy? Can't see half the people here, so. So I would take brief questions, but we're just, you know, we're only here to try to make sure the process is taking the right direction. So if anybody has any real questions, you can come up, but let's just keep it brief, please. Go ahead, Colin, you're first.
I understand the process, even though I disagree with it, but where is the $8,000, Mr. Superintendent, coming from? Why? Out of what budget?
We haven't agreed to spend anything. He was just doing his homework on it with me.
But if, if, where would that money come from? What budget was it? There's nothing in our budget right now for high school, for principal search, for a firm. I'm just clarifying.
That's correct. It's a bottom-line budget. We would have to find the money somewhere in the budget.
But we don't have it. We voted on this budget already, so where are you going to get that money from?
Again, I'm not recommending that. I just wanted to be able to provide the board with as much information as I could prior to...
Understood, understood. But again, you don't have that money.
One of the board members asked if we had ever done, if we had ever hired anyone, you know, to look for certain, so all he did was his homework, and he was just reporting back to us.
No, I understood, Maury. Well, that's...
Yeah, we're not going to spend $8,000 to try to find him some...
But you don't, you don't even have that in a line item, so yeah.
Colin, I understand, and we did not okay to spend the money.
Okay, thank you.
I can raise my voice, too. I'm just telling you, we didn't.
No, absolutely. No, no, and I'm not being disrespectful. I'm just trying to get clarification. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Torres, I think you have your hand up. Oh, you better come up.
I'll talk that. So I was just going to ask, is it, because I've been on several administrative hiring committees, I think three now at this point, and then before, I don't know. But not when Mr. Hudson was hired, but when everybody else has been hired, I've been on the committee. And I don't remember anything happening except for a committee being formed, and the stakeholders, we got together on Zoom or in person, and then held interviews, and then proposed somebody to the board or to the superintendent, who would then go to the board with that person as who they chose. So I don't understand what the big search is for.
So the board itself asked for some timelines to what it looked like, to what we were doing. As you all are very aware, this is a, this is a big hire. And so we wanted to make sure that we knew what we were doing. Julie, I'm just answering your question. So we wanted to, as a board, really have a plan, really know what that meant, what it looked like for us. You're right, there's going to be a hiring committee, there's going to be a search committee, there's, you know, all those things are going to happen. But what I, what I wanted to see was, you know, if we had to go through this, make sure we were crossing all our Ts and, and, you know, looking all the right places.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
What was the hiring process when you hired Mr. Haas? I mean, I know he was placed as interim, totally understand that. I think it was necessary. We needed to fix a problem. There was immediately a problem that needed abandoning. But right now, it's my understanding from the last few months since September, that all of a sudden, Mr. Haas went from interim superintendent to superintendent. Were there interviews? Was anybody else a candidate? Were there flybys that saved our pants?
So the truth is, I can answer that. I wasn't part of the issue more than that all happened. And Lita was, even though she got her hand up. So I can't answer that. I can't give you a good answer. The way to get that answer is to go to your next SU meeting.
When is that?
I think, here, at 6:30.
To discuss Andy, about Mr. Haas's contract for...
Correct.
I was just going to say that the high school board wasn't responsible for hiring Andy. That was the SU board.
But still are.
That, the SU board.
That's correct. But we were not on that board when that happened.
Nobody here was on that board?
Mr. Quirk and Priscilla by lots of things, but it's an issue question. Andy Haas is from the issue.
Last week, it's a statement, not a question, but I just wanted to tell you that your candidate is on...
Lita, will you go turn that mic on?
I can.
You're just going to touch the middle of it.
Oh, Mr. Bird.
I thought it was on the side. Mr. Hodgson, would you like to speak?
No, he doesn't.
I was on the spot. I just said, see if you want me.
No, what I was going to say, and I had a moment of, I'm not remembering anything at all, which happens obviously often to me, but I believe the candidate is right here in town on West Terrace and waiting for a reinstatement letter or asking him.
Yes, please come down.
Sorry, you forgot the name of the...
Amanda, I got it. I wrote it down.
So I actually just have a question, which might seem foolish, but I don't like to do politics and policies and stuff, so forgive me. What happens if we do not find a replacement principal by the following school year? Like, I'm just concerned because right now, the middle school's still in limbo. So why are we getting rid of people when we actually have people? We so desperately need people. Like, I work in the school. We don't have subs. We don't have enough staff. We have all these openings. Why are we getting rid of people that actually want to be here? And what happens? What happens when we can't find a replacement? Because the jobs, no one wants to work anymore. And so if we can't get people to wait tables, how are we going to get a worthy principal in? We have someone who actually wants it.
So I'm sorry to cut you off, but during public comments is the time to have this. This is about principal search, and maybe we wanted to ask some questions or comments.
Like, what is the policy? Like, I have a student here. What happens next September when school starts if we don't have a replacement?
So I don't want to speak at a term, but I believe the assistant principal would take over until one was found. Is that correct?
So if we either look to find an interim principal, we would work with the UPA on placement, perhaps a retired principal or something of that nature.
Somebody who really doesn't need a job.
Does the board have any other questions for the principal search? Colin, this is it. 30 seconds. What do you got?
30 seconds. The SU board, yes, is separate from this, but yes, it's not, because you have representatives on this board that represent the SU board. So those members, could you please say something?
Are we ready for Director's comments? I think we are. You haven't spoke yet. Come on up.
I mean, because I've been on the board for a while. I have a junior in the high school now, and I know we're talking about the search for a new principal, which clearly it seems like we don't really need to waste the time and the energy. We should be focusing that energy into figuring out how to keep Mr. Brody here. So my question and concern or wondering is, everybody's asking you to reconsider that whole process. How do we know as a community, you know that that's being reconsidered? Is there going to be an additional meeting to discuss that? Maybe the floor moving forward too long in the process of looking for a new principal? Because we could avoid and waste all, not waste all that time and energy if we could go the other route and talk, discuss about offering a contract to Mr. Brody. I believe they were presented sometime this month. And I'm wondering if there's been discussion about not offering him one versus offering him one. Maybe that's part of the issue, and I don't know what the issue is ours. But I feel like we should be focusing our energies on having the conversations to keep him here before really digging in deep into the search for a principal.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to talk from here and use my background voice.
Kathy Birdman?
Yes, because I'm going to crawl up to that microphone. So Priscilla and David are on the supervisory.
I am not on the supervisory on your board, Kathy.
You're not.
So they were on it when the superintendent, that's what the question was. They were on it then. David was not on that board when that happened.
He resigned from the board last year.
So it's just you saying? So.
David and I were on it when Andy was hired.
Okay, is there anybody on this board that's still, you are still on it?
He was hired for a regular superintendent, but I was on it as a rock and can representative, not a high school representative.
Are you still on it?
I am still on it, yes.
All right. So my question is, after all of the meeting here and all of listening to the people here, is there any chance you could go back to your board and express what was happening here and ask for a reconsideration of that vote? I know you're very strong and vocal with your board and very considerate. Is there any way you could go back and perhaps look at the video and ask your board if they might reconsider looking at their vote, considering how strongly the community feels about keeping Mr. Brody? Is there any chance that that could happen?
I think that is up to...
So I would like to go into Director's comments because I haven't asked Mr. Brody, but this was, this was put on the last meeting, so, I mean, it's public knowledge. Back TV and everyone else was there. So I would like to speak as Director's comments, very Director's comments. We don't normally take any conversation from the hall, so I don't want to shut anyone off. So if anybody has anything else to say, if not, I'd like to read the letter that... Go ahead, Chris.
So recognizing that we're still under the topic of principal search, I would just want to speak very briefly to that. My experience, both here for 25 years and my continued experience in education, tells me that is it possible that through a very thorough search, which I think the superintendent has described, and you very appropriately have asked for a process, is it possible to find someone who is going to do a better job than Mr. Brody? Absolutely. And having been part of this process for many years, it's totally understandable that if John brought the letter forward that he did, that this might be seen by some board members as an opportunity to improve the school through this process. Is it possible? Yes. Is it likely? Not at all. And so then what we have here is a risk-reward situation. Is it, is the risk of bringing in someone who is not going to improve the performance of the principal position worth it relative to possibly reaching out to John to find out whether there is a possibility of him continuing? Is the risk versus the reward worth taking that chance? As a community member, I think it's not worth that risk. And I would say that I would encourage the board to give due consideration to that as, as you deliberate over what's the direction for the leadership in this building. I can tell you this much, I tried to give up that job three times and everyone stuck once. And so that means there is that possibility of coming back to the individual and saying, is there a way of moving forward that gets everybody's needs met? Thank you.
Anyone else? So someone said that John didn't write a letter of resignation, and I don't have any of his computer, but... It, it does not say. What it says is, "I am writing this letter to inform you that I will not be seeking to renew my contract as a Bellas Falls Union High School principal. My contract is up on June 30th, 2023, for personal and professional reasons. Please accept this letter as my formal communication, and will not be seeking to renew my contract effective June 30th." So I just, I spoke up, or I spoke up in my head anyways, that of course it said that, but it didn't, so. It was in there. I'm sorry, but I did not overspeak when you were speaking, so please let me have my turn. This is... This is what we have to deal with right now. And you guys have all given us something to think about. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to give my opinion. I think as your board chair, I have to keep it very professional and go back to our board at a later date and be able to speak to them on people's concerns and on, on our concerns. And I'm not going to stand here and give you any reasons. I don't think that's fair to Mr. Bradley. And so I'm not going to do that. I'm, I think that I have a relationship with Mr. Bradley that is very good. I think we've become friends. I've been in school board chair for a while. And, you know, we, we do a lot of things other than sit at school board meetings together. And, you know, it's, and I'm not going to tell you that I disagree with any of you, that he has a love of Bellas Falls and the school. But I also know that we have a job to do. And I appreciate that everyone has come out. And it does, you know, we're not doing our job if we don't listen to you and, and think about what we have done. But all I did was read a letter that was given to me, and we had to vote on it. And I had a conversation with Mr. Bradley before. And he, that's what, he told me needed to happen. So that's, that's what I kind of leaded my charge with the board. But that doesn't mean that we can't go back and, and look at what's really going on. But I'm not going to stand here or sit here and start talking poorly about it. That is not what I'm about. And I hope there isn't a single little board member that is here to do that. Because I'm, I'll walk away. Because that's not, that's not the kind of people I want to be around. So I am done. And I thank everyone for coming. And June Streeter, you are next. You have any Director's comments?
Oh, yeah, actually. I would just, I love the outpouring. I love the number of people that are here. I'd like to remind you that they, our actual meetings are open to the public. You can view them on Zoom. You can watch them on Fact TV. The minutes are public knowledge. So, you know, come, come to normal meetings and, and see what we're trying to do and, and get a little bit more informed. Thank you.
Priscilla, you're next.
It was a pleasure to hear some of your comments and hear all the positives. Because all of us know in life that negatives sometimes speak louder than what we want them to. So listening to all of the positive outcry, I am sure that John will maybe even cry when he hears how much you care and how much you have been willing to say here at this meeting. And I appreciate you. And as Molly said, it's discussions that, of course, we as board have to have. So thank you, and thank you for all being here.
Jason, you're next.
Molly, thank you. I, you know, I'm just focused on, there's 150 days left until June 30th. And I'm focused on the kids. And I'm focused on, I'm focused on them only. And I really have no comment while there's an open investigation.
Thank you, Molly. David Clark, in case anybody doesn't know that. On the form, board chair, to talk Christopher Hodgson out of resigning two, the three times that he resigned. Now, having said that, I do not believe that John Bradley is going to be back in the next school year. Also want to say that I have, in fact, read through the documents that Andy Haas has supplied to his board here with regards to the hiring process. And I didn't think much of them. But that's probably because of the source of those documents, which, thank heavens for Andy, wasn't Andy. And I did put down a few markers with this board and this administration today about what I thought might be some important considerations for a hiring process. First off, I said that I thought that we should be opening it up to people from away. Secondly, I said that if we're going to give lip service to the concept of diversity and equity, that we might very well consider making that one of the primary considerations in our hiring process, that we have a diverse pool of candidates to consider. Then the other thing that I said was that I happen to believe very strongly that this is not a foil-to-play Vermont School Boards Association cookie cutter situation here. I think that we need to give serious consideration as to just exactly what it is we're looking for leadership in this school. And, you know, I'm going to agree with a lot of people in this room, beginning with former Principal Hodgson, that it is a risky proposition. And I'm going to agree with people in this room who say that it might not be a done deal before school opens again next fall. These are serious, serious considerations. And if we're going to have a change in leadership, which at this point in time appears to be what's going to happen, then it's not simply hand it off to the outside consultants to come up with a principal, but to sit down with the players and their, I don't know, there's probably half a dozen here and about 40 in this room. They continually counted you up tonight to see how many people are here. And we need to come together and talk about what it is we really want in leadership. And if you think this board is on a wrong track here, then you can come to our meetings and reinforce that possibility. But I do very strongly believe that if we're going to have a change in leadership, we need to define just exactly what it is we want, and then go out and get it. So Molly, thank you for the time.
So I have three board members on the screen. So I'm going to start with Margot for Director's comments. How about Tanya? Is Tanya there for Director's comments? I can see you, Tanya. How about Brenda? I think I have done my job here tonight. We are down to adjourn this meeting at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much.